All right, Justin, you want to leave us in vocation?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you. God, we just praise your name for all things. We thank you for the many blessings you give. God, today we ask a special blessing on the Carr family. Lord, as they're still wounded, they're lost. We thank you for all of the law enforcement officers and first responders. God, we pray a special blessing on them tonight. I pray that you just keep them safe as they continue to keep us safe. God, we ask again for wisdom tonight for our leaders of our community. God, we pray that you would help guide them in making the right decisions that they would need to make. Lord, we love you, in your name we pray, amen.
Amanda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting, start with our roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton is absent. Jan Throgmorden is absent. Jordy Lindaberry?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Stephen Pence?
Here.
Don Rollins? Our city attorney's present and our city clerk is absent. All right, so first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda or the adoption of it as it was mailed.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Do we have a motion in second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from March 9th. Are there any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second it again. We have a motion in second. War two representative. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight?
Are you sure you ain't gonna ask again?
Okay. All right, we'll close the public forum, move into our business reports. Doesn't look like our representative from the planning commission is here. Are there any questions concerning the planning commission? I would again urge everyone to try to make their meetings as they work through the renewed rezoning ordinance that they're working on. They are making good progress with that. And they do have a lot split coming before them at their next meeting that involves the property that was originally, the developer was looking at to put the tiny homes on. They're shifting gears and they're bringing a new proposal to the planning commission. And so that'll be, what is that, Kristy, is that next Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday? Okay, that's this Thursday. It's 6:30. Here, here. All right. Court report, Tracy?
Oh, hi. Not wearing my glasses. Anyway, thank you. We were up all the way on this earth for this month and you guys have no more to say to you. Everything seems to be going well. We are starting to have more people come to court again. I was getting to see that maybe getting our protective glass put back around the thing since the judge's bench, since the judge is going back in there now. The other thing is if you know anybody looking for a job, the court, my deputy court clerk has resigned and Friday is her last day. She's gonna take over at Greylund.
Any questions for Tracy? Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Library report. Shannon?
Hello. We are celebrating poetry month this month, so we have two events coming up for adults. On the 21st, we'll be doing scrapbooking, making cards, since graduation, adding poems to it. And on the 22nd, we'll have a local author from Fayetteville, her name's Linda Lebel. She'll be speaking virtually. As we continue to do things, we did a watercolor paint night in March. We have limited space, but it's really nice to have that engagement. So anywhere from even eight people will make it a ton of fun to have in the library while still hosting things virtually. So we'll continue to do that. And we've just been working towards getting to our regular business hours, which will begin on Monday. So we will be not taking any more appointments, but we will continue our curbside services.
Any questions for Shannon?
So you're gonna be open Monday through Saturday, regular hours?
Yes.
Cool. Is there limited people?
Yeah, we'll do limited. There are appointments even, we've done that. If it just felt like it was heavier traffic, usually people are browsing in different spaces. So we will just kind of see how it goes versus setting a set number. But as it fills pool, we have a sign already that just has people waiting if that happens.
Okay.
Any other questions for Shannon?
One more. Are you gonna be doing, sorry, story time or?
We're currently doing story time every Tuesday, virtually at 10:30. We'll continue, and then we're doing it at the park right now at 11:15.
Cool.
So we're just still, as we transition, offering both. And then we'll see what picks up and what patrons want and continue to do that.
Okay, cool.
So Shannon, I also need to change our ask the mayor. Between you and I talking about that and me getting to a calendar, somebody had put something on mine.
Sounds good.
So I don't know if we want to maybe move it to Monday or Tuesday? Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to just send me an email of what works, then I will, I will make sure and get you.
Since she will change her calendar, but apparently you won't.
That's the territory. Thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, I was gonna say that I have been so impressed with how, over the whole COVID thing for a year, when you haven't been able to operate as usual, that you've done an amazing job of making the libraries still accessible and still a vital part of our community. So, thank you. I mean, every month, I'm just like, wow, how does she come up with that idea? So you're doing a great job.
Thanks.
Anything else for Shannon?
Go ahead.
All right, Chief Nelson, give us our police report.
347 calls for service. We had 94 citations and 51 warrants, pretty typical month. We did get our local law enforcement block rank, which is good, $500. And besides that, it's been a pretty typical month. We're continuing our training, we had one last night. So everything's looking pretty good. Any questions?
Not until you sit down.
No questions for the chief? All right, thank you, sir. Parks report, Chad? Did I skip somebody? Oh, sorry, Isaac. Go ahead and give us. Give us the parks report.
Pretty much the same as last month. Super. We did finish up our line replacement on Boyd. And we're observing boils down on McKnight, they're moving along pretty well, I think, under the circumstances. So, so we got, we're gonna move on to a main extension there at the end of Hidden Creek. And the big news was Mr. Ed retiring, which was, which we had a nice little get together for him down here. It was pretty good. You have something to add? Nick's here.
How about sewer update and packet?
He does that.
Questions? About the same, like Isaac said, I mean, we're about done with the main project, the roofing project, about 98% done. Just like clean up punch list items. McKnight's in progress, or I'd say, well, as of last week, they're about half done, they're a little more than halfway now. Nobody moving over to the school area after that. We just got done walking that project and getting that ready for them to jump straight into. And then on the pond closure, we're still waiting on the formal DEQ approval letter. They said it is coming. We talked to the person in charge and said they will be issuing a letter. Another contractor is ready to go. And we've got CAO extension, I imagine on the agenda.
Yes.
I put it that, so that was, that was the only other main item I had. I'll answer any questions if anyone's got any.
Any questions for Nick? Where we're at with that?
When the pond closure starts, we'll be spread kind of thin because we'll be watching them down there and watching on that sewer plant. So, so I've got one guy who's gonna stay down there all the time. But we have offered up an extra hand to the contractor for cleaning those out too. So, for that month and a half, two months, we'll be, we'll be a little thin, so.
Are you telling us the grass is gonna get tall?
No, no.
Call in back.
He'll be calling me if that driveway gets tall, I promise you. No, we'll, we handle the grass.
Okay. All right, anything else for Isaac? What's, what's the general consensus on McKnight Street? Are we, do we think we're making improvements?
Yes.
We're not digging out the old pipe though, right? So we don't really know.
No, we're.
Right where they, when they come by Francis Alvarez's old house there, they started getting into shelf rock, which had water running out of the entire town. And that's pretty much what we were taking in our sewer, we think.
Okay.
Cause right along in there is where Damon and I couldn't see anything because so much water was coming in. So right about where that drainage ditch is, they started hitting slate and shelf rock out there that just had water pouring out of it, so.
Okay. Good.
Till they hit spring or something.
All right, Chad, you wanna get us?
Water loss this month?
Water loss was?
31%.
Yeah.
Not nearly as bad as you expected.
No, no, no. With all the freezes and whatnot, it was gonna be a lot worse, but it wasn't. Careful. I think we're still finding folks that's got leaks. We still, we had several high readings today, so. So we're gonna have to cut down.
Anything else for Isaac? All right, Chad?
So baseball and softball are full swing. That's keeping us busy. The high school has a couple of weeks left on their regular season and then all my teams have been practicing for several weeks. And our league games will start next week. And the good news is the sewer line that runs under our ball fields looking good. So I just tried to bring them up in the middle of season for it, so I'm pretty happy about that. And then the parks committee didn't meet this month, so I don't have any minutes. We do have a meeting scheduled first week of May. And at that meeting, we are going to make final decisions about our Fourth of July event. We are gonna hold the Fourth of July event. And I think I already told you, we set that for July 1st this year. We're just not exactly sure on the top of what we're gonna have, so. But we should have that by next council meeting. I'll share that information for you. If you all have any input or want to discuss it, have any thoughts on it, reach out to me please before that first one you make. Because we hope to have our decisions made by then. The Paul Mueller field dedication that I was hoping to already have has not even been scheduled yet because we, I still do not have my memorial plaque. There were some issues with the picture that's going on it and I had to go back and redesign it. And anyway, I do not want to schedule that until I do have it in hand. But we do have signs on the scoreboard and on the field fence with Paul Mueller's name on it and stuff. So as soon as we get the plaque in hand, we're gonna get a ceremony scheduled for that as well. And we still have plans in place to get the bike and pedestrian trail done. Looking at probably somewhere early to mid-July, once we get through our season and through our Fourth of July event. We'll just schedule and begin on that sometime in July. And it shouldn't take long once we get, get going, so. So we should have a nice new bike pedestrian trail hopefully by mid or late July. And I think that's it. For my memorial, yes. Went from not mowing, mowing all the time, so that's what's key.
Any questions for Chad? What kind of turnout did you have for, for the ball teams?
We were, I, I should have looked at the exact numbers because I've had some late signups. But we're probably down, we're down three teams and roughly about 30 kids from last year's numbers. But last year's numbers were a little bit low as well, so. Better than most of the other cities, honestly. Elkins was down, they were down about 10 teams overall.
Wow.
We weren't bad. So we wound up with, I want to say about 200, almost 230 kids, 225, something like that. Is where we shook out. And we were at 255, I think, last year. Overall, not bad. We had a lot of people who wanted to sign up playing. Some of them we were able to put on teams, some of them weren't. I don't know if that's because they were afraid of COVID or they just like, ah, we're not gonna play, we didn't play last year. And then the friends were playing, I don't know. We had a lot of people who wanted to sign up after we'd already organized teams and started practices. A lot of them we were able to get on team. Some of them were just, the teams were too full, had our uniforms, things like that, so. But we roll in next week.
Good, good.
Just regular, normal pre-COVID guidelines or?
The league, we had a WCCL meeting last week and they decided not to set any guidelines. We're following recommendations and that's what we're gonna do mostly is recommend masks and things like that. But we're not gonna set any rules, especially for the spectators. We're gonna encourage social distance, mask wherever necessary and things like that. So we're kind of following the lead of the state officials and others that are giving more recommendations than actual mandates, so. And the high schools, they started out making them wear masks and everything as a mask mandate. They let up that on spectators and really it's not been a problem. People, I mean, everyone's been dealing with this for a year or. So there hasn't been any issues down there. People, they're, they're doing what they need to do, they're social distancing, wearing their mask where they need to if they go to concession stand areas, crowded, things like that, so. So far, so good. Practices, I would say, they're, I've asked my coaches to wear them where necessary. If they're working close to the kids, to wear them. If they're 60 feet away, hit them ground balls, such, not need, just be smart about it. So far, it's worked out, though. Anything else? Okay, thank you all.
Thanks, Chad. Chief Myers?
Well, we had 79 calls for service. We've criticized most we had bought last year, so we've been pretty busy. So we did have fire station CPR certification. Library six going through first responder class right now. We did get our new flooring for the fire department, but it's not in yet. Hopefully it'll ring a bit, Chad, TJ can come up and put that in. Wish I had a radio update. We have a county meeting sometime, probably last week this month, maybe I'll have some more information then. But other than that, that's about all we've got.
Any question for Chief Myers?
Well, how did that Saturday's plain hamburger food out thing go?
That was food school.
Oh.
The baseball team.
Okay.
We've kind of been a host for several run rankings this year. Just because it's off of Main Street, it's easy to get people in there, get a drive-through. But I don't, we don't mind it, so.
Yeah, did it look successful?
Actually, it was a high school baseball game.
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a kind of like a loose club for a baseball team that held it. And honestly, I, I'm not sure.
My in-laws enjoyed it.
I think they did pretty well.
Yeah.
But I don't know if you're about to do it. He get one there, so. So I'll be asking.
Anything else for Chief Myers? All right, Kristy, you wanna give us the financial reports?
Budgets look really good. We're $106,000 under budget for the year so far. If you'll notice, though, we have one department that's showing Overwood that does the street. That has to do with the fifty dozen yard that we rode last month for the paving, for our, for the paving project. We probably will get a little bit of that back. We'll probably make that up throughout the year, so not too concerned about that. Sales tax is still going up steadily. We're getting a higher number this time last year. And on the actual financial reports, I've gone through and underlined everything that was, is over 25% because we're at a quarter of the year. There's a lot of things underlined. 99% of those are things that we just pay heavy at the first of the year. So there, there wasn't anything that really stood out to me that was concerning, so. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. And then other than financials, we have found a, an all-call system to use for emergencies. So we're gonna start working on, trying to figure out how, what the best way to plug numbers is. We don't want to automatically sign up people without their permission. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can start getting it out there, that we're, we will have something that will be used for emergencies only. It is, it's a system that we basically pay as we use it. So there's not like a monthly fee or anything. If we use it once a year, then we only pay for it that one time. We've had two incidences this year that we would probably use it for. But in the last 10 years, we've probably had two incidences that we just. So it's kind of one of those things, I think it'll be great to have available to us so that if we do have boil orders or, you know, water outages or something like that, that we can get that out and more people. But it's just gonna be a matter of getting people to sign up for it, letting people know that it's available to get, to be signed up for. So we will be working on that.
Any questions concerning any of that? Has everyone had a chance to look at the website and go into the archive documents? Since we've got everything in electronic format now?
Have not.
So I would encourage you to take a minute to do that. Christine DeManda put a lot of work into it and if you can search, you can search every, I'm gonna go ahead and say that, Kristy, you can search every document in West Fork's history, keyword search, right? So if you want to know how long Don Rollins was mayor, you type in Don Rollins and his name's gonna start popping up on documents. I mean, it's that powerful, so we can, we can do any, I shouldn't say we can search every, because somebody's gonna take me verbatim on that. And we got everything that wasn't too brittle, too big, or too old to go through the scanners is now.
So probably much, there's not very much there that would be savable from my.
But yeah, I mean, it, it's really powerful. And if you, if you're trying to research something within the city, it's a really great, great tool. Christine DeManda did a lot of work on that, a lot of good work on that, so. Go check that out. All right, we didn't have any old business. New business. Resolution 2021-04 is authorizing the destruction of documents. And we have a list of what documents, Exhibit A, that we would like to have permission to destroy. All valuable items and their date. But keeping record of that is not something we necessarily need. Do we have any discussion concerning those check stubs, water invoices, receipt books? What is this, all 2016 and older, Kristy, 2017 and older?
And older, yes. I thought you said over, I was like, yeah, but yes, older than 2017. So there's, stake all that outline how many years you have to keep things. So every, every document's a little bit different, but we verified that we have kept everything as long as we need to and that everything has been audited. So we're not getting rid of anything that either we've lost, those two were the hasn't been audited.
Questions, comments, concerns, motions?
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2021-04, authorizing destruction of documents.
Second. Do we have a motion in second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two, Resolution 2021-05, approve amendment number three to consent administrative order. Nick was hoping to get to read this to you guys. I told him you'd already read it. So this is just extending our, our operating term on the plant closure. We, we still have some items out there that cannot be closed until everything is completed. And this puts us through September, October, I don't remember, Nick.
August.
August 1st.
See how easy it is to make quick on dates? Sorry, I said something.
That was a good one, Don. Any questions concerning this administrative order?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2021-05.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Which brings us to item three. Approve a budget adjustment, adding $35,000 from the general fund reserves to building maintenance line item for insulation, paint, and the mural at the court police building. On this, and we talked a little bit about it last month, I believe, that the courts building, we're having some issues with some moisture in the ceiling, coming down on the ceiling tiles. And we talked about how that building, when we, when we did the construction phase of it, we, we made some budget cuts, trying to cut back on some things. Part of that was painting the building. So what I'm asking is to take some money out of reserves. We put some money in reserves last year. We've had the engineers come in and determine a course of action to, they're gonna expand, defome the inside walls of the court and the part of the roof in there to seal it from the inside. And then paint the outside to seal that brick on the outside to try to keep that moisture out of the attic, if you will. So in doing so, that was gonna be roughly $25,000 to get that done. I asked Kristy to add another 10 into that, since we're going into reserves, to go ahead and get the mural painted. In order to do a mural on the front of that building, it needs to be sealed and painted so that the mural doesn't bubble and come off any year. The estimates that we have received on that, somewhere $8,000, $9,000 to cover the whole end of that building.
Just the end?
Yes, sir. Yeah. We'll paint the whole building, but the mural will just be on the end of it.
But the, that is to seal and paint the whole building?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And, and do the insulation, the foam insulation on the interior?
See, but it, it's gonna be like the spray foam?
Yeah, it's a closed cell spray foam.
So the closed cell will be like a water barrier?
Yeah, I mean, it has like a hard rating.
Yeah.
Pretty high hard rating.
It's John, what, what Isaac said and what they're saying is there's, there's multiple layers of brick. So it's not just one brick that's got an interior and exterior layer to it. It's, we've got an exterior layer that's open to the elements that suck in moisture in. It's just coming through a layer of bricks.
I know a lot of the spray foam isn't, I mean, it'll just soak up water and mold and everything else.
Yeah, like the open cell stuff, it gives what you have to cut it out.
Yes.
Closed cell stuff, like seals it off, so.
Okay.
So, and what you said a minute ago was to try and stop the moisture. There's not a guarantee?
I don't think we have a guarantee.
No.
This is, we have had engineers come down and look at it and assess it. Am I correct?
Well, Baldwin and Shell came down and looked at it, and after talking with Jesse Poole, this is, this was his recommendation that we talked about putting some dehumidifiers up there. He said, I think those will work, but it's not gonna stop the moisture from coming in until you spray it on the sides and, and seal it off from the inside.
And the architect was the other one that said that sealing it.
So, are we sealing it and putting the dehumidifiers?
No, sir. We're not doing the dehumidifiers. We're just sealing it on both sides of the brick. That's what the proposal is.
So, if it, if we still have moisture, then we could try the dehumidifiers along with it?
Yeah. And I mean, the dehumidifier is still an option later on down the road.
Well, I'm just wondering whether, you know, if it doesn't work, if we have.
Well.
You know, or if that's just it, you know?
We have the huge open spot where the, the courtroom was, but then when you start down into like where the old council room is, it gets, the spaces get smaller. So, it's hard to get all of that picked up by the dehumidifier. So.
Right.
So, it's gonna be multiple units sitting in there, and Jesse felt like the spray foam would do just as good. So.
Any other questions? Don had some good ones.
Um, what's the mural gonna be?
You didn't know?
No, I was on site.
The memo went out. Um, so, what is the mural gonna be? We have something picked out. Uh, we don't have someone picked out to do it, um, cause I kinda just made up my mind exactly where we wanted to go with it. Uh, is it legal for me not to answer that question while the cameras are rolling? Well, if it's Misty, you should tell her. Well, I definitely want, I want to tell you, but I would also like a little bit of element of surprise.
Not that a lot of people.
Then we could tell her after.
If she's gonna be, if it, if it's gonna be a picture of her, you should tell her.
He'll tell you afterwards.
Well, can you describe it in very detailed terms? Something of historical significance or something of. Uh, so, it is, uh, the thought.
Okay, I'll just withdraw my question. You want me to do that?
No.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
Yeah. I would like to have some element of surprise.
Okay, well, I'll just.
I think everybody.
I'll just withdraw the question.
I, I, I talked it over with department heads, uh, last week. Everybody seemed to be on board with this concept. They haven't been with all of them. I can tell you that. Uh, but this last concept, everyone was, was a yes. They thought this would be a good representation for that, for that wall. Okay?
Okay. Motion to approve the budget adjustment.
Second.
Any discussion on that before we move forward? Okay. Uh, motion is second to approve this budget adjustment. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Okay. Item D, other business. This was put on the agenda, uh, at the recommendation of a council member, um, to discuss anything that the council wants to bring up and discuss that is not on the agenda. Do we have any, anything?
We're gonna have Westfest this year.
Good, good.
Is it gonna be like, like it has been in the past?
Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure, you know, I didn't know if it's gonna be anything?
No.
Okay.
It should be actually, uh, September eleventh. Hang on there. Yep. We've done it before. We had a pretty good chili supper that night. It will be the eleventh and twelfth, September eleventh.
So, uh, not to interrupt, but just to give you an idea of how powerful, uh, the search is, uh, that we've implemented with the digitizing of all the city documents. Uh, Attorney Kiklak has just determined that back in nineteen seventy-six, it appears that Don Rollins was actually in charge of, uh, Tim Hildre, um, both being city employees at the time. But it looked like Don Rollins was the upper man in that, uh, hierarchy.
Well, guess where?
We can tell you exactly how much money you made that year too.
Guess where Tim Hildre is now? Where Don Rollins is. But we're still really good friends.
That's the important part. But, very powerful.
It, it didn't go back any farther than seventy-six, did it? Please tell me it didn't. Don't look at the court documents or anything like that.
I can get to work on it if you'd like me to, Don.
Are there pictures of him?
All right. Any other, other business?
Well, I don't know if in this forum, Westfest, the committee, the organization was ever thanked for your donation at Christmas time to help provide food for families. I don't know if we did that, but they provided a monetary donation to buy meal kits for families in need in our, in our community. And they did that with the reserves that they had from years past. And I don't know that you've got recognition.
Probably not.
Thanks for that. So.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
And that's why we do that.
On behalf of the families that received that food, thank you for sharing your generosity with them. So.
That's why we do it.
Anything else? All right. Uh, so we'll move into Mayor's comments, and I only have one. Uh, and I'm, I think we talked about this last meeting. I'm not sure, maybe touched on it, that there's some CARESAC money for states and cities. Um, it does look like West Fork should get, uh, a large amount of that, um, in, to the tune of roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're thinking well, it'll probably come in two installments. Uh, there are, there are gonna be some limits to what it can be spent on. There are going to be some limits to how quickly we have to spend it. Uh, water and sewer infrastructure is an item that it can be spent fairly freely on. So, just kinda giving you a heads up there that, uh, we're looking at probably some, some big projects in that, uh, in that department, uh, once we start to get some of that money. Um, Isaac and Nick have been talking about some different things, but in particular, um, one project in particular is an upgrade to our water meters that we have. You know, we've been doing it over the course of the last three years, uh, a little bit at a time. Uh, but Isaac is also finding that we, we're losing a lot of water through some of those older meters. So, that, that will probably be a project that, that I'm asking for your approval on, once that comes in, uh, to, to do a massive, uh, installation of those meters. So, uh, anyway, very fortunate to get it. We don't know when we'll get it yet. Uh, but I think, Kristi, was it you that told me that probably have to have it spent by twenty twenty-three or?
Yeah, in twenty twenty-four, I think.
Okay. So, they're, they're gonna put some time, timeframes on it, use it or lose it. Uh, but I, I think we have some stuff that we can definitely, in that, in that realm, water and sewer infrastructure, we've got some spots we can, we can put some money into. We're not, we're not intending to send any of it back. Uh, but anyway, that's just kind of a general update to you guys, so you know that, uh, we, we have a little bit more information. Tom's been, uh, looking into it as well. And so, uh, as soon as we get more information, we'll keep you updated. But that's the only thing I had. So, with that, I would, any kind of motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank y'all very much.